Could someone close the doors for us, please? Unless there's a reason to leave them open.
Margaret.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the February 24, 2022, combined conference and meeting for the Mobile County Commission. This morning, we would like to welcome Pastor Sidney Phillip from the Grace Bible Church to bring our invocation. We ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father, this morning, we thank you that we can first come to you with everything in our lives. We acknowledge you, Lord, as the giver of life. We thank you most of all for abundant life that we have in Christ our Lord. And help us to see, Lord, that all of life is about you and that one day we will all stand before you and give an account of everything that's done, whether it be good or bad. So, Lord, we just praise you for this opportunity to serve you. And we thank you, Lord, for these commissioners that serve in this capacity and their families and all the staff. We just lift them to you. And, Lord, I pray your blessings upon them. Lord, I would pray with this commission that you would give them unity and purpose for the good of the county. And, Lord, we, most of all, this morning, as we think of Ukraine and your people who are suffering there, we lift them to you, oh, Lord. Bless them, comfort them, and be with them. And so, Lord, we give you the glory for all that you're doing. And may the words of our mouth and the meditation of our hearts be always acceptable in your sight, oh, Lord, our strength and our redeemer. And we make our prayers in the wonderful name of Jesus. Amen.
Praise the lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good morning. We have some very special guests with us today. We are officially launching Navy Week. And as part of their celebration, we would ask Command Master Chief Antonio Pyraman to please join us. Pyraman, that's a good old Mobile name.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a resolution for you, and I'll read it. Commendation of professional achievement for Command Master Chief Antonio Pyraman, United States Navy. And whereas the Mobile County Commission recognizes Command Master Chief Antonio Pyraman of the United States Navy on the occasion of his retirement, we take this moment to acknowledge and commend his dedication, leadership, and contribution of honorable service to our country. And whereas with a devotion to duty and a spirit of sacrifice, Master Chief Pyraman has helped maintain the security of our nation throughout his illustrious 33 years of military service. He will retire in April 2022. And whereas his standard of excellence has earned him the respect and gratitude of his colleagues as well as national, regional, state, and local leaders, especially here in Mobile County, Alabama. And whereas we are honored to recognize Master Chief Pyraman during Navy Week being held February 21 through March 1, 2022 in Mobile County, Alabama. This will mark Master Chief Pyraman's final Navy Week in his hometown of Mobile, Alabama. And whereas his commitment and loyalty have been an inspiration for those who will follow in his footsteps and for all Americans who join with us today and salute in Master Chief Pyraman for a job well done. And now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Mobile County Commission does hereby applaud Command Master Chief Antonio Pyraman for his years of military service. Furthermore, we extend our heartfelt best wishes to him for many years of good health, happiness, and blessings for years to come. Godspeed. And it's signed, Connie Hudson, Commissioner Randall Doitt, Commissioner Merceria Luck, Goodest President.
Good morning, Mobile. I'm thankful. I'm blessed. Thirty-three years of naval service. It's not an easy process, but I'm thankful for the people of Mobile because you've paved the way for me to be who I am. I don't mind telling people that I'm from Orange Grove Project, where I was bred and born at. But I had a good grandmother in my life that told me respect, dignity, and character goes a long ways in life. Yes, ma'am, no, ma'am, yes, sir, no, sir. All the things that was instilled in me as a kid. I've did that from 1989 now to 2022. And I know that I love my city of Mobile. I love this nation. I love this country. I've served it honorably for 33 years. So to say, "Thank me?" No, I thank you for allowing me the opportunity. I thank you for being the good people of Mobile, Alabama. I thank you for continuing to get in the community and making it happen. Our youth needs to know that they are the leaders of this future, and we got to put the right things in front of them for them to succeed. So that's what I've been doing for my 33 years in the Navy, distilling goals inside of young minds that need to know that they can win. And one day, they will be legendary, so make it epic. So today, I say, "Thank you, Mobile, for allowing me to be home."
Okay. Now, we have four honorees during this time period, but we have two with us today. We'd ask Carol Bunton and Jackie Holland to please join us here. You know, people have been getting ideas since we started doing this. I won't call any names. So we have resolutions, and I'll read it. Upon your retirement, the Mobile County Commission presents this certificate. And we have Carol Bunton and Jackie Holland and wishes to express its sincere thanks and gratitude for your 29 years. And, oh, Carol Bunton, 29 years and five months of dedicated service. Jackie Holland, 15 years and seven months of dedicated service. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence has long inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement. And it's signed by three Commissioners, Connie Hudson, Randall Doitt, and myself. That was a drop-the-mic moment, in case you were wondering. Now, we will have a presentation from the Dolphin Island Sea Lab, Americor, NCC, NCC team. Our presenter is Jared Reed, Bio Two Community Relations Representative with Americor Southern Region.
Hello, everyone.
Hey.
Never done this before.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having me. So I suppose if I'm speaking on behalf of Americor, I also get to thank on behalf of Americor. So I'd like to thank Michelle Lee Stevens for being an incredibly gracious host for our team. We're helping them at the Dolphin Island Sea Lab. We are painting, renovating, building, getting new areas ready, fixing old areas. I'd like to thank Mobile. I'd like to thank Dolphin Island City. You've all been incredibly gracious and welcoming. As I've come through the South and especially as I find myself in Mobile, I've found the people of the South to be incredibly, incredibly kind and welcoming and hardworking. It's been a real honor to get to meet all these people. So, without any other way, I'd like to talk about Americor a little bit. Americor, for those that don't know, is a 10- to 12-month service program for youth ages 18 to 24. So what happens is, you sign on. You get brought to a campus somewhere in the country. In our case, it's in Vicksburg, Mississippi. You train as a team, get put on a team together, and you spend 10 to 12 months touring around your region doing community service work. This could be anything from disaster relief to trail building, to, in our case, just helping a local organization get their feet on. We are really, really glad to be doing what we're doing for them. Every day, we can see the organization progress more. We can see it come together. There's a lot of guests that are already noticing these changes that we've made, all this painting and all these renovations we've done. Just a moment. I said, "I've never done this before," and it kind of feels like reverse stand-up, where I've got the crowd over here and you're over there, you know?
Well, you are among friends.
I appreciate that. That's what I've noticed. I come from Boise, Idaho, and there's not much known about the South in Idaho. So when I came here, I was worried it was going to be a very different place than it is. I got here, and I felt very, very welcome. I really like the South a lot. So Americor, our purpose is, the official tagline is "to strengthen communities and develop leaders." I think that's a little bit buzzwordy. Really, what it does is it provides a lot of experience to people. So I came here having only ever worked in kitchens, being a line cook, and I've gone to hop on roofs and help people repair their shingling after hurricanes. So I've gone to help build low-income housing in the Lower Ninth Board in New Orleans. And now that I'm here in Dolphin Island, I get to improve a local aquarium and science lab, and that is something I'm incredibly grateful for. Through this Americor simulates the economy in a number of ways. You're putting these undergrads and these grads in situations that they've never been exposed to before. So it's a high exposure, do a lot of different technical skills, a lot of different career paths. And through Americor, a lot of people find their calling. We're serving with traditional corps. So Americor is set up similar to a lot of military in that there's separate branches in the work they're doing. We belong to NCC, National Civilian Community Corps, and that's split into Traditional and FEMA. We serve with Traditional. So that's a lot more boots-on-the-ground. We go in and we do all the work that organizations need help with. So in terms of why we serve for Americor, it's rather difficult. You get put on a team with 10 people you don't know. You're kept together for 12 months, serving in a variety of conditions that aren't always comfortable. I've slept in a room with 10 other people. Just one big room. It's not an easy thing. But there's a number of reasons that we serve. First, most common is an education award. We see a lot of undergrads and grads enter Americor because there's an education award that we put towards student loans, student debt, going towards continued education, trade schools. Experience, free travel, free housing. You know, where I come from, I would have never gone to see the places I've been had I not joined this program, and I'm incredibly grateful that I have. I know I keep gushing over this, but I really have. I've been incredibly amazed by the South and the people in it and all the history behind it. I represent Bio Two, although there are a few members here. We have been to New Orleans, New York, a number of rural communities in Mississippi, and now Alabama. We just got the word we'll soon be heading to South Carolina to do forest work. We're very excited about that. So I just want to wrap up by thanking you all, thanking Dolphin Island Sea Lab, thanking the city of Mobile. It's really been an incredible experience being down here. I think that where I'm from, there are a lot of misconceptions about the South that now that I'm here, I see are incredibly unfair and grossly untrue. I think this is one of the best places on earth. I really love the culture and the people here and all it represents. I love that I can walk into any barbecue shop and the person running it will treat me like a cousin or a son. I can say, "Yes, sir," and "Yes, ma'am," now, which is going to be kind of weird when I get back to town. No one does that there. But I'm a really happy part of it. I think it's been a really wonderful experience getting to get ingrained in it. I want to thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank all of you guys.
Thank you for sharing that experience. I happen to believe that all of us should develop that side of us that wants to give back. And it sounds like y'all are really doing that at a real high level. So we appreciate your time in our community and wish you the best of luck as you finish your tour of the South. Thank you.
And to add to the complication and the difficulty, I know it could not have been easy working for Shelley that had to be tough.
So I'd just like to announce that after our meeting, there'll be a flag ceremony at 11:00 in Government Plaza Courtyard in honor of Navy Week. So please join us. Do we have any speakers?
Good morning, Commissioners. No, we have no speakers this morning.
All right, Mr. Hutt.
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 10, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve the list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in the fund balance report.
Before I open the public hearing, I would just like to say if there's anyone who wants to take a break now from our 63-item agenda, you may feel free to dismiss yourselves. We don't want to hold you hostage here, but you're welcome to stay. All right. We'll see our Navy friends soon. All right. The public hearing is now open. Are there any speakers for or again? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed.
Number four, approve the payment of claims for home programming conjunction with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved.
Second.
Number five, hold a public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding proposed substantial amendment to the Program Year 2021 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program to reallocate CDBG funds of $200,000 from Whistler Bike Trail to East Elm Street Improvement Utility Relocation Project. This information has been available to the public since January 23, 2022.
The public hearing is now in session. Are there any speakers for or again? Public hearing is now closed.
Number six, adopt a substantial amendment to Program Year 2021 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program following the comment period in public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, adopt a standing resolution for use of county-owned metal crowd-control barricades by municipalities and nonprofit organizations situated in Mobile County on, as available, as needed, first-come, first-served basis without further commission action.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, adopt a resolution authorizing the relocation of the following polling sites for the following precincts.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve appropriation contract with Sierra Land Area Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $10,000 from District One funds for operating expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve appropriation contract with Cottage Hill Athletic Association in the amount of $3,537.70 from District Two funds for baseball uniforms.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners in Mobile County in the amount of $29,262.56 from District Three funds to be applied to the cost of the playground.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, authorize sub-receipient agreement with Mobile Area Education Foundation for an amount of $237,080.80 for childcare programs under the Community Development Block Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, adopt a resolution authorizing requests of probate court to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list declared as surplus property.
So moved.
Second.
And number 14, there's a change, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'd like to add my district funds of $5,000 and split that three ways.
So it'll be District One, $5,000; District Two, $5,000; District Three, $5,000. Okay. Number 14, approve sponsorship agreement with Providence Foundation in a total amount of $15,000 to be divided as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Number 15, authorize transfer of various county funds and accounts to Service First Bank Region Bank and Hamcourt Whitney Bank as recommended by the Investment Committee and authorize the President of the Commission or Finance Director to execute such account agreements as may be necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Number 16, approve professional services agreement with Thomas Stephen Ellisord for consulting services regarding operations of the Juneau Detention Center for six months. Compensation not to exceed $2,000 per month.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, authorize hazardous duty pay of $200 per month and educational incentive pay for Mobile County juvenile detention officers, juvenile detention coordinators, and juvenile detention supervisors at the James T. Strickland Youth Center, subject to personnel board approval and beginning at the commencement of the first full pay period following such approval.
So moved.
Second.
Number 18, approve contract with Robert Lathan, Certified Prison Rape Elimination Act auditor in the amount of $5,000 for pre-audit as required by the State of Alabama Department of Youth Services at the James T. Strickland Youth Center.
So moved.
Second.
Number 19, approve professional services contract with TRES, St. Ferri, Ph.D. for consultation and training of court staff, juvenile probation officers, juvenile detention officers at James T. Strickland Youth Center in a total amount of $7,000 to be paid from detention subsidy funds.
So moved.
Second.
And number 20 has been requested to be held over. Number 21, approve project agreement between Ivonic Corporation and Mobile County for development and expansion of the existing facility located in Mobile County at a cost of $100,000, which will employ 10 additional employees with an average yearly salary of $93,000, which amount shall be payable upon completion of the project and certification of the 10 new employees. Further approve authorization of the President of the Commission to sign all necessary documents associated with this project agreement.
Was there a representative here from Ivonic today?
There is. Would you like to come up?
Yeah, just for one second, if you don't mind. Thank you for being here, and we're glad to partner with you guys on this project. It's 10 great jobs, and that's really the only... It's not really a question. I just have a statement to make. I would appreciate if you guys would do your due diligence to make sure that as many of these employees as can possibly be found in Mobile County, that you would do that. I think it's important that when we give corporations money from the taxpayers in Mobile, that it benefit the citizens who live in Mobile County. And I know you guys do. I know you guys do. I'm familiar with your hiring practices. But I just wanted to make that statement to you, and I'd appreciate you trying to do that for us. And I know you guys do. I'm familiar with your history even prior to being Ivonic and the number of people who have come through those gates over the years that live in our community, and I appreciate you guys doing that. Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Number 22, approve a consent to assignment of lawn maintenance contracts for five county facilities by Complete Management Group to its successor company, Butler Complete Service LLC, provided viability insurance requirement applicable to each contract remain in effect through contract termination on September 30, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Number 23, approve appropriation contract with Mobile Medical Museum, Inc., in the amount of $5,000 to be divided as follows to support educational programs.
So moved.
Second.
Number 24, approve appropriation contract with Sims Recreation and Community Center in the amount of $6,028 from District Two funds for repairs to the basketball goals.
So moved.
Second.
Number 25, adopt a resolution authorizing requests of the Sheriff's Office to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list declared as surplus property.
So moved.
Second.
Number 26, approve county's determination that the 418-acre parcel of real property, commonly known as Grave Line Bay Marsh, parcel adjacent to the Dolphin Island Municipal Airport, purchased from Dolphin Island, LTD, on July 27, 2020, is no longer needed for the county's public purposes and is declared surplus.
So moved.
Second.
Number 27, approve donation of the 418-acre parcel of real property, commonly known as Grave Line Bay Marsh, parcel adjacent to the Dolphin Island Municipal Airport, purchased from Dolphin Island, LTD, on July 27, 2020, to the town of Dolphin Island by statutory warranty D for use by the town of Dolphin Island for public purposes only, and authorize the Commission President to sign all documents related to this donation.
So moved.
Second.
Number 28, authorize advertising and receiving biz for Mobile County parking garage stair repair.
So moved.
So I'm assuming this is a maintenance item that is not covered by our rental agreement, by our lease agreement?
That's my understanding, Commissioner, that it's not a part of their maintenance since it's a capital improvement.
Okay. All right. Second.
Okay. Number 29, authorize advertising and receiving biz for Project Grand Bay Senior Center Walking Trail.
So moved.
Second.
Number 30, approve material license agreement with NG Studios, LLC, for use of rendering of future home of African Town Heritage House.
So moved.
Second.
Number 31, approve appropriation contract where I shall Mertz Magnet School PTO in amount of $33,510 from District One funds for a safety fence, playground, malt, pick-my-kid dismissal system, employee incentives not to exceed amounts set out in the Alabama Ethics Code, and a principal's discretionary fund.
So moved.
Second.
Number 32, approve county levies for alcoholic beverages, beverage license for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Number 33, authorize submission of Federal Emergency Management Agency Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program Application for First Responders Safe Room with an estimated total cost of $2,830,754.15, which includes an associated 25% county match estimated to be $707,688.54.
So moved.
Second.
Number 34, authorize acceptance of grant award and sub-receipient agreement from Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the storm water management improvements for Tomlin Springs and Gum Tree Branch in amount of $1,170.106, but no local match required, and authorize execution of all associated documents.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-five, authorize submission of Alabama Recycling Fund grant application to Alabama Department Environmental Management in amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand six twenty-four to purchase a glass popperizer, poppers, equipment parts, and provide a concrete staging pad for the Mobile County Recycling Center in partnership with Goodwill Industries Golf Coast with no local match required.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-six, approve amendment number one to Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., dated July sixteen, twenty twenty-one to add task one B, engineering and design for Lewis Landing.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-seven, approve amendment number three to Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Moffett and Nickel, Inc., dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one to add task four A, engineering and design services for Cedar Point here.
So moved.
Second.
Number thirty-eight, approve amendment memorandum of understanding with the Utilities Board of the City of Bayou La Batry relating to county implementation of the extension of affluent force main from Bayou La Batry Water, wastewater treatment facility project and Bayou La Batry collection and system life station upgrades founded by Restore, and authorize execution of all associated documents.
So moved.
Second.
Number thirty-nine, approve memorandum of understanding with the Utilities Board of the City of Bayou La Batry for implementation of waterline relocation at SR dash one eighty-eight and Irvington Bayou La Batry Highway, and authorize creation of a commission district project for the waterline relocation at SR dash one eighty-eight and Irvington Bayou La Batry Highway in amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand from District Three funds, and authorize execution of all associated documents.
I'll take offers to split that from other commissioners.
Good luck with that.
So moved.
Second.
Number forty, approve amendment number one to Bayou La Batry Water System Upgrades Phase One Contracts with McDonald, Alabama, dated October first, twenty twenty, to add bid and construction services for waterline relocations at SR dash one eighty-eight and Irvington Bayou La Batry Highway.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-one, authorize advertising and receiving bids for waterline relocation at SR dash one eighty-eight and Irvington Bayou La Batry Highway.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-two, approve amendment number four to Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Moffett and Nickle, Inc., dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one to add task two, uh, one, construction, engineering, and inspection services for Memories Fish Camp Boat Ramp Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-three, authorize advertising, receiving bids for project Memories Fish Camp Boat Ramp Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Number forty-four, authorize submission of grant renewal application to the Corporation for National and Community Service to continue the Merricore Senior, Mobile County Senior Companion Program for five hundred and thirty-one thousand six thirty-three for project period July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-five, approve appropriation contract with Mobile Area Monte Grau Association in amount of fifteen thousand from District One funds for activities during the twenty twenty-two Monte Grau season.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-six, approve purchase of twenty-two acre postural of real property located at, um, eleven seven forty-five Old Shipyard Road, Theodore, Alabama, three six five eight two from Engler REI LLC in amount of a hundred thousand plus closing costs. This acreage will be for conservation purposes using Gomasa twenty-one oh one funds, subject to a hundred and twenty-day due diligence period and final legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-seven, approve agreement relating to the conveyance of additional road right-ofway for House Ferry Road by Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners of the City of Mobile to the county, vacation of a portion of House Ferry Road right-ofway by the county, and the construction of a new cul-de-sac or turner turnaround within existing new House Ferry Road right-ofway by Mobile Area Water and Sewer System.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-eight, adopt a resolution resc- ascending to the vacation of a portion of House Ferry Road by the sole dividing property owner, the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners of the City of Mobile in accordance with the property's owner duly executed declaration of vacation.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-nine, approve a professional service agreement with Airwind, Inc., for an amount not to exceed two thousand five hundred to update existing public service announcements for probate court.
So moved.
Second.
Number fifty, approve correction in the February tenth, twenty twenty-two minutes agenda item number thirty-two. The item should read, should read as follows, approve six-month lease agreement from the current purchasing cooperative, Amia, with William Scottman, Inc., doing business as Will Scott, for one mobile office and one toilet unit in the amount of thirty-seven thousand one twenty-seven thirty-two Gomasa twenty-one dash oh five public access master plan development funding for Cedar Point location. The correction is to increase the amount of the thirty-four thousand two forty-one fifty-four by two thousand eight fifty-five seventy-eight in the final lease agreement due to freight cost increase due to the state code restrictions. A unit was delivered from Atlanta, Georgia that meets Alabama standards.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-one, approve contract with Eagle Electrical Services LLC in amount of thirty-eight thousand three eighty-eighty for electrical work at the Cedar Point here.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-two, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-three, approve of cost of appointment, appointed election officials and mandatory training in a total expenditure amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand seven ninety-one for Alabama primary election to be held on May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, and the Alabama primary runoff election to be held on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-four, approve renewal of maintenance agreement with Eaton Corporation in amount of three thousand two hundred for Eaton UPS for the period of April tenth, twenty twenty-two through April ninth, twenty twenty-three for revenue commission.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-five, approve thirty-six month Sharp copier lease agreement with Sharp Electronics Corporation under the current state of Alabama contract for one Sharp MX thirty fifty-one, any amount of one thirty-two sixty-five per month for County Commission Camp One Buyer's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-six, award bid to HCL Contracting LLC for project Dauphin Island Streets resurfacing for a low bid in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand two twenty-five thirty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-seven, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-ofway deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-eight, approve project to furnish and deliver four loads of sand clay to Mawa Wallfields. Total estimate cost is six hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-nine, approve change order number one, final AxTales, Inc., project, remark runway twelve dash thirty at Jeremiah A. Denton Airport on Dauphin Island to reduce the original contract amount to the actual final payable amount for closeout as required by the Federal Aviation Administration.
So moved.
Second.
Sixteen, adopt a resolution stating that Mobile County Commission stands in opposition to Senate Bill one fifty-seven and House Bill three sixty-eight. These bills, as proposed in the twenty twenty-two legislative session, will increase allowable gross weight and axle weight for logging trucks by ten percent, which will almost double the detrimental impacts to counties, roads, and bridges.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-one, approve preliminary and final plat for Aaron's Woods subdivision and preliminary and final plat, a re-subdivision of Lot Five Grand Bay Estates Unit Three, and preliminary and final plat Victoria's Manor.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-two, approve a final plat of Chapel Creek Phase Three and accept road right-ofways as shown on the subdivision plat for the following streets, and accept the roads in the subdivision for maintenance by Mobile County together with drainage system as it affects said roads, and accept the warranty deed for right-ofway indicated on the plat.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-three, approve amending County Commission action of August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, item number eighteen, that originally approved the purchase of an undivided one-half interest of the real property from Janelle B. McCloud, which originally anticipated purchase for a hundred and eight acres located on the south side of Highway ninety-eight of Escataba River for purchase price of one half with a total price of eight hundred and ten thousand plus cost of closing. The correct total purchase price of the property should be eight hundred and thirty-six thousand two ninety-seven, six, seventy-six plus closing costs. The purchase price has been increased due to the county survey during the due diligence period discovering additional three point five three acres, and authorize the Commission President to sign all documents related to the closing.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me, Mr. Hodge, may I just interrupt? Uh, Commissioners, can we go back to, um, item number twenty-nine?
Yes, ma'am.
And add a last sentence funded by CDBG CV in brackets a decka.
So you just want us to add?
Funded by CDBG CV. In brackets a decka.
A decka.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, we have two add-ons. First add-on is approve amending County Commission action of August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, item number seventeen, that originally approved the purchase of an indiv- undivided one-half interest of the real property from the estate of John Whitehead, Jr., also known as John J. Whitehead deceased, which originally anticipated purchase of a hundred and eight acres located on the south side of Highway ninety-eight of the Escataba River for a purchase price of one half of the total sale price of eight hundred and ten thousand plus cost of closing. Correct number, total purchase price of the property should be eight hundred and thirty-six thousand two ninety-seven seventy-six plus closing cost. Purchase price increased due to the county survey during the diligence of period discovering an additional three point five three acres, and authorize the Commission President to sign all documents related to the closing.
Is this different from item number sixty?
It's the same thing, except there are two ownership groups that own the land, so we treat them separately for the purchase, purposes of the purchase agreement, and hence second.
Okay.
Separate, second.
But the total purchase price for this one hundred and eleven point fifty-three acres.
Eight hundred and thirty-six thousand two ninety-seven.
And that will be divided between those two owners.
And we are scheduled to close tomorrow, hopefully by the end of day tomorrow, county will own that, and just for the record, we're also scheduled to close tomorrow at the same time for complete transfer for tomorrow afternoon on the Lincoln Golf Course.
So moved.
Second.
And the second add-on, consider taking the following action on bid, approve to purchase eight, purchase eight new CV five fifteen SFA four by two crew cab pickup trucks from the current state of Alabama contract, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-three thousand four eleven oh four for the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second, Public Works. All right, got it. Just want to make sure we all remember, Public Works got some equipment.
And number sixty-four, Commissioner, announcements and or comments.
So I just want to recognize the remaining retirees, Jackie Pedan, twenty years of record supervisor with the Sheriff's Department, Deborah Brooks, thirty-two years, eleven months, with the Revenue Committe- as an OA, as an office assistant to at the Revenue Commissioner's Office. Um, Jeffrey Hamilton, twenty-five years, nine months, public service supervisor, county engineer in the Public Works. And so we wish them all the very best of luck. Chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn, and we will call to order the Indigent Care Board meeting.
Number sixty-five, approve request from Ishall.
Motion to adjourn.
Um, motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, I call to order the Mobile County Indigent Care Board meeting.
Number one, approve the minutes of the meeting of the January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, accept a report from the Mobile County Commission of the balance in the Indigent Care Fund at January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, funds available, one hundred and eighty-two thousand four seventy-nine sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
And number three, request for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Please join us in the courtyard if your schedule allows. Thank you. And let the good times roll for everybody who's going to be rolling.